Can you hear me now? All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting in order at 6:31 PM. Let's see. There was... We're back. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. We're starting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can all rise. Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, we have one item to report out of closed session. Claim number 2526-5. Claim KMA Minor by and through her guardian and ad litem Brittany Mack versus Saugus Union School District. The board took action in closed section to reject claim number 2526-5. The vote was 5-0 to reject the claim. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for September 16th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of the governing board for September 2nd, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. We're all here for the recognition, our marvelous math award. So I will turn it over to Mr. Klement.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so we are here for our marvelous math winners this evening. So if you have an award, if you will go ahead and bring your award up to the front. And we're going to stand along the curve here, facing the audience. You can go ahead and bring your award, hold it in front. If you are online and receiving an award today, if you could use the raise your hand feature, we'll pull you into our meeting. I don't think we have any that I knew of. All right, so what we will do, I'm going to read off the award today. And when I read your name in school, if you want to step forward or give a wave and let everybody know who you are, and then we'll read your information off and we will give you a round of applause. So first, let's have some audience participation. With math tonight, raise your hand if you were a math person over a reading person. Where are math people at? Okay, so Mr. Heinlein.
Mr. Trunkie. Ms. Cooper?
I say, I say thank you because I'm not a math person, but you guys all clearly are. So you are marvelous math award winners who are demonstrating wonderful achievement in math, both with just how to do the problems, but the critical thinking and the problem solving, explaining your answer and working with others and discovering new ways to find answers. All very important work as we enter the world of mathematics. So we're going to go ahead and start. And if you guys can stay standing, I'll turn it over to the board president and they'd like to say a few words. Congratulations.
Yeah, we would like to say some, some nice words. So we'll start with Mr. Watson.
Well, congratulations to all of you. Love hearing how well you're all doing. I happen to believe that we can all be math people if we apply the right mathematical mindsets. And it sounds like clearly you are. So my challenge to you is to take that math amazingness and apply it to any problem or any issue that you can find in life and, and it will help you solve not all your problems, but a lot of them. Congratulations.
Mr. Trunkie.
Congratulations to all of you. What a great impression you guys have made on your teachers in such a short period of time this year. Keep up the great work and we'll see you back here maybe the end of the school year too.
Way to make your school time count. I did notice that a lot of the math award recipients were a little more animated. I took some bows, which cracked me up because you know, usually math people are considered nerds, but nerds are talk, so you guys like. And also people who are good at math tend to also be good at music because of patterns. So I don't know how many of you like play an instrument or good job, or maybe plan to be in a band when you're in high school or, you know. But it all comes back to math, so congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations to everyone up here. I am not great at math and I work very hard in my professional life to probably be as educated and patient as you guys. To the parents, thank you. I, as a mom to a young student, I understand how patient parents need to be when they're learning. So kudos to you guys and to the teachers out there who are patient with their students and knowing that not everybody learns the same way, but taking the time to explain is really important. So thank you and congratulations to everybody.
Kudos to all of you. You are impressing your teachers in such a short period of time. Keep up the great work. And the challenge I would pose to all of you is since you are such stellar math students, if you can ever help one of your fellow, you know, fellow classmates that maybe is having a challenge in math, you guys are primed to do that because you guys understand it and you're doing it so well. So keep up the great work and good luck the rest of your math year. All right. So now we'll go ahead and take a photo. So if you guys can all gather around and we'll stand up and get a picture with everybody. And then parents, you're obviously welcome to take some pictures. Okay, why don't we take a, I think we got most of our pictures, but families, you're welcome to take a few more. Why don't we, we'll reconvene our meeting in five minutes. Thank you, everybody. All right, so we are moving on to our hearing session and I'm going to read my, oh, read my spiel. Thanks, guys. All right. So advanced written requests to address the board regarding agenda and non-agenda items. Board bylaws 9320, 9322, and 9323. Each speak to the process used by the governing board to allow for public comment during its meetings. The board, I'm sorry, the bylaws are in compliance with the Brown Act and other applicable law. Board bylaw 9323 specifically outlines the process for members of the public to address the governing board on agenda and non-agenda items that are within its subject matter jurisdiction. Members of the public wishing to address the governing board are asked to do the following prior to the start of the public comment section of the meeting agenda to ensure that appropriate time is allotted to all interested speakers and topics. The speaker must either complete a speaker card for each item they desire to speak on and/or notify the assistant to the superintendent of each item if attending the meeting in person. This notification is requested to allow the board president to consistently implement public comment guidelines provided in board bylaw 9323. Members of the public wishing to make public comment via telephone or virtual meeting software must notify the assistant to the superintendent via email, not later than 4:30 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting to ensure that the person has the same opportunity to address the board under board bylaw 9323 as those who are in attendance. Each speaker is allowed three minutes per topic for public comment. The total time allotted for each topic is 20 minutes. Depending on the number of persons wishing to be heard on a single topic, the governing board may adjust the time allotted for each speaker or the total time allocated to the topic issue. The president of the board may take a poll of speakers for and against the topic issue to determine how best to allot time on each topic issue. Members of the public who wish to address the board do so either in person or via Zoom. A speaker may read a statement from an individual not in attendance. However, their allotted speaking time will not be extended to reach such a statement. A timer visible to all attendees will be used to manage time during public comment. Any speaker who exceeds their allotted time will have their mic cut off. To ensure that non-English speakers receive the same opportunity to directly address the board, any member of the public who utilizes a translator shall be provided at least twice the allotted time to address the board unless simultaneous translation equipment is used to allow the board to hear the translated public testimony simultaneously. Please remember that state law prevents the board from acting on any matter not listed on the agenda or from discussing any such matter in detail. Okay. Starting with our speaker cards, Mr. Frank Smathers, followed by Ms. Ingrid Boyston.
Okay, I just wanted to make some comments on the proposed calendar of the asset committee in regard to the future of Santa Coria Elementary. According to the calendar, there will be an 18 to 24 month timeline of due diligence in which there will be study sessions and meetings between the SUSD consultants, development partners, and community input. This proposed calendar has not yet been detailed. And it seems like we should be making sure that the sessions and meetings are in some way made available to the citizens of Santa Coria so that the people can be informed of the step-by-step progress as it moves along to a conclusion. Will all the meetings and study sessions be open to the public? Will there perhaps be email newsletters sent out after each session so we can keep up with the project? The responsibility for the future of the property stands with the SUSD. But we also need to remember that the construction and maintenance of the school has been bought and paid for by the taxpayers of California for 60 years. And they deserve a voice in the future of the property. We don't know what will happen or we don't know when it will happen, but we hope for the best. And if we can all agree that we want the best possible resolution, it will happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smathers. Ms. Boyston, followed up by Mr. Tim Ben Boyston. And we're going to move the podium over so that it's on the screen. Thank you.
Can we make sure the spotlight's on as well?
Good evening. I wanted to thank you for your words of support and encouragement at the last meeting. I'm really glad you are on board with me because as it turns out, we actually have still more work to do. At the last meeting, I said, if you are still drowning and see extreme behaviors, please speak up. Teachers spoke up. My words won't be as effective as theirs, so here they are. Children are hitting, kicking, screaming, scratching, pulling hair, throwing things, tearing bulletin boards, exposing themselves, using the F-word, climbing on, swinging on the furniture, running around the room to evade adults, and running out of the classroom on a daily basis. I'm sure you're asking, why aren't those teachers following the protocols for addressing situations like this? These are, and they're, they're trying to. But some teachers are still being cautioned not to communicate to parents everything that happens. And some teachers are told just to let those kids do what they want to do so that they don't get upset and disrupt. But obviously that doesn't work, especially with four and five-year-olds. So-and-so is going to play with the toy house and scream, but you focus on a lesson. Here's what else the teachers have said to me often through tears. It makes me so sad. I cry because I see the other students and they're so sad, they're so mad, they're so confused. I can't even get to them. Now the other kids are starting to misbehave. I'm so burned out, I'm discouraged, I'm afraid, and I'm angry. One student told his teacher, today was such a good day, felt safe. While the student with the extreme behaviors had been gone that day, that's unacceptable, that is horrifying. Now you thought that was the bad news, but no, here's the real bad news. These students that I'm talking about today have all been previously identified with extreme behavior problems. They were put into these classrooms without any special support in place. And in some instances, even the teacher wasn't informed of the child's background. So what am I asking you to do? I'm asking you to stop saying, give it time. Some of these kids are in the middle grades by now. It's been this way for years. Stop asking teachers to do impossible things. I'm asking for all hands on deck. Cabinet members, those of you who have the training, VCBAs, if behavior charts and letting the child do whatever they want, so as long as they don't scream is supposed to work, somebody come into the classroom and show us how it's supposed to be done. Find the aides, train the people. This is an emergency, we created this one. So it's up to us to do what it takes to solve it. We're causing trauma for everyone in these situations. I'm going to end with a quote from a report titled, "School Safety: Tools for Public Education Employees", CTA Legal Department, 2024. Students have a constitutional right to a free and equitable public education, but many come to school with complex needs and negative disruptive behaviors that seriously interfere with their fellow students' constitutional right to a public education. Educators are deeply committed to the success of all students, but these disruptive, the disruptive behaviors of the students most in need of assistance can in extreme cases threaten the educators' legal rights to a safe and secure workplace. Parents, if you're not sure if your child is in a safe classroom, ask the teacher. Thank you for listening. Now please, let's do something and provide that needed assistance. Thank you for listening. God bless Saugus.
Tim Ben, followed up by Tammy Messina.
Good evening, president and members of the school board. I'm Tim Ben Boyston, speaking as a citizen. And I'm going to read to you from The Signal, a great local newspaper, a great resource. And I think everyone should go ahead and subscribe because not every community has this kind of resource. Cedar Creek teacher claims lawsuit, fear in lawsuit. Claims that a classroom fear is in lawsuit. A former Cedar Creek Elementary School first grader who claimed she was injured by a special needs student and was then fired in retaliation for raising a concern about her safety is suing the district. Crystal Huber, who began at the school in July 2022, repeatedly reported feeling unsafe with a particular student in her classroom, identifies the boy in her classroom as high social emotional need students for displaying extreme violent tendencies, according to her complaint. Her lawsuit sets up a timeline of various incidents that happened in the classroom involving the student that led to her claims. Mrs. Huber eventually developed a mental condition, making her job difficult to perform and required an accommodation, according to the general allegations section of the lawsuit. When Mrs. Huber requested accommodation, she was sent home without pay. Huber's lawsuit claims that the Saugus district terminated her employment for the same reason. The concern started in August of 2023 with a meeting between Huber and Cedar Creek principal, with Huber raising a concern from the previous year's kindergarten teacher who said this same student kicked her so hard she required surgery, according to the lawsuit. Other aides that worked with the student quit because of the danger posed by this student, according to the lawsuit. On October 24th, 2023, meeting with Huber, the principal, and the student's parents, who met to discuss the individualized education plan provided to the boy based on his needs, the parents were notified about an increase in the child's aggressive behavior. One week later, Huber met with a member of the district's proactive problem-solving team, and Huber told the staff how she felt unsafe about the student's violent tendencies, according to the lawsuit. Almost a month later, Huber said a cabinet was repeatedly slammed against her head and back by the same student requiring the teacher to go to urgent care for a treatment of injuries. There's more. I'll let you go online and go ahead and finish reading that. But my point is this, I know you can't comment on this as an ongoing lawsuit, but you don't have to comment on that because you hear time and time again, for a year we've been coming before this board to try to get some things put into place to take care of these students and get them assessed immediately, not 60 days later. Because that's not a rule, even though some of the teachers are told, oh, you have to wait 60 days. No, that's suggested timeline. My suggested timeline is that you assess these kids before they ever step foot in the classroom. Stop destroying all these other kids' education. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tammy Messina, followed by Catherine Samuelson.
Good evening, board. This will be for the electeds. Based on what Mr. Boyston just read, that's my concern too. I'm not really sure what's going on, but the fact that these things have been happening long before they came to the board last year means that this is an ongoing systemic problem that the board, the elected board, needs to address with the administration. You have a job to do. Things are dangerous for some teachers. Maybe it's not that way in every classroom. Maybe they can hold it together when you have a visit. I don't know what's happening. Maybe you have a site-specific problem. Maybe it's not district-wide. I don't know, but you've got to figure it out. That's what your job is. So my questions to you are, how many students and teachers do we need to expose to trauma before the district takes these issues seriously and stops it now? There has to be a way to put a stop to the trauma for both the students and the teachers. Current methods and measures are still not working. We're well into the start of this year. It's time to do something. How many more lawsuits do we need to have? Because, you know, people ask me all the time, why do I keep coming to elementary school district meetings? I'm a taxpayer, that's my money. That's- I'm a taxpayer. That's my money. That's everyone's money. We all have a right to have a say in this." And honestly, that's kind of why we put you guys there, to oversee that. So you're supposed to do something about it and prevent the lawsuits before they happen and protect the teachers. How many teachers and staff do we have to lose? It's not just the teachers. Our pairs are under attack as well. They need protection. It's creating a hostile work environment, and this isn't just the first year or the second year. It's been going on since, I think, Tim Ben read, 2023? It's too long. It's long enough to have a solution and something in place, so you guys got to do something. Teachers and staff are still reporting that they are up to their eyeballs in big behaviors this year. It's not okay. So what I'm requesting is an update on the behavior status and what you intend to do about the things that are being reported that Ms. Boydston is reporting from teachers who are afraid to come up here and say anything because nothing's getting done. I'm asking you to do your job, and thank you for listening.
Catherine Samuelson, followed by Karen Frost.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to draw something that I tried to get an answer for in the past and just kind of feel like I keep getting pushed aside or given excuses, and that's regarding the zoning for the former Santa Clarita Elementary School area. We still do not have a homeschool in our area. We are now in the second school year, I believe, since that school has been closed down. We don't have a homeschool, which means that people in my neighborhood don't have any priority when they go to enroll their kids at other schools. My closest school to me where I live is Emblem, since Santa Clarita is actually a little further than Emblem is for us. And now this closed down. I said, "Why can't we get rezoned to Emblem?" Hawkins told us, "No, absolutely not." Why? I have no idea. It's literally across the street from me, but we can't go there. So it's a problem when people are moving into the neighborhood. They go online to the zoning map. You punch in the address, and my address, it says Santa Clarita's the homeschool. And then when I've asked Hawkins, "Why aren't we rezoned?", and her excuse is that we have open enrollment. Anybody can enroll wherever they want to go. But like I said, the problem is, we don't have priority anywhere. We can get pushed off to the next school, the next school, the next school. And then that leads me to more concern with that, is that we have a new development going in on David's Way in Bokeh Canyon, and we have a new development going in where the Saugus Speedway was, all under SUSD's jurisdiction. Where are all of those kids going to go? Are they going to get assigned a homeschool? Or are they going to be like us, and we just don't give them homeschools? So what is the reason? Why aren't we being rezoned? Why don't we have priority anywhere? And I have repeatedly asked this, and I just get told it's open enrollment. So at this time, since I can't get an answer out of Dr. Hawkins, I'm just asking the Board that maybe you can all look into this and find out for us homeowners that live in that area, people that have kids. We have so many houses that are being sold in my neighborhood right now that the parents are being pushed to other schools, third, fourth down the list, once they pick from them. Some of them, they're having to try twenty minutes to get to a school. Why? So please help me. Please help our neighborhood figure out, "Why aren't we being rezoned? Get me an answer. You'll have my email address. I would love an answer. Thank you."
Thank you. Karen Frost.
Hi, Board. Thank you, Governing Board, for letting me address you. I know I'm running in late on a wing and a prayer. I was home with my kids, but I had to come because I too, and it may have been already covered because I came in late, so I apologize if I'm being redundant, but I too read the article from The Signal on September 2nd, and I'm formally requesting that this Governing Board make an agenda item to discuss an update as to where we are, because I found this article to be deeply troubling. And we have had a history of big behaviors. I'm a special-needs parent. I know that these are challenging cases, and we have to balance the needs of the students, but we also have to balance the needs of the teachers, and we have to create a work environment where they can do their job. And so we've been discussing this in this boardroom, in the audience, for years, and I know that we've adopted a new curriculum that, you know, some people are saying they're cautiously optimistic, but I think that the public that has been monitoring this issue for the last couple of years deserves an update. Where are we? Where are we on the behaviors? Where are we on making progress, or are we not? So I think that the public deserves to know where we stand on this because we've been coming to you for a couple of years, I'm sorry, a couple of years, and this is an issue that, when I read it in this article, I found it deeply troubling. So please, take it amongst yourselves and set an agenda item so that you can get an update on where we are and then bring it back to the community so we can understand what's going on within the district on this topic. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our Saugus Teachers Association, Ms. Jamie Vincent.
Good evening, Board members, Cabinet, colleagues, community members, and families. Congratulations to this evening's award recipients. We are very proud of you. My name is Jamie Vincent. I am the current treasurer on the SDA Executive Board. It is my honor to speak before you this evening. First, I'd like to say thank you to Plum Canyon Teachers for your support and coming out tonight. Good job. In our last message, our president shared that educators across the district have set goals to provide optimal learning experiences for our young scholars in a safe and positive school climate. With our new universal dismissal schedule, schools across the district have implemented targeted academic intervention with the support of our transitional kindergarten and our kindergarten teachers. As is often the case with something new, when something new is implemented in school programs, it takes time to work out the kinks. In this case, there has been some confusion at some sites, which makes us wonder where the miscommunication or disconnect lies. We are working on behalf of our members and with the district to clarify the purpose, intent, expectations, and varying intervention models available. We believe that a collaboration between the site administration, classroom teachers, and the intervention teachers is imperative to the successful implementation. Our hope is that in the not-so-distant future, this will all be worked out, and critical interventions will begin and/or continue to take place. Sites across the district are also participating in our annual PBIS, Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, kickoffs. Students will have opportunities to participate in school-wide activities to learn and review rules, expectations, and incentives for each of the areas on campus, including but not limited to expected behaviors in the classroom, libraries, multipurpose rooms, science labs, playground, office, and more. These efforts are intended to promote, foster, and maintain safe and positive school climates. We know that positive behaviors go hand-in-hand with effectively accessing curriculum and successful learning. Having said that, behaviors continue to be a significant concern in numerous classrooms across the district. We have brought general and specific concerns to meet and confer, conversations with HR, and meetings with Darcy Quinn and Michelle Berry's in Student Support Services. As always, our goal is to be a voice for ensuring safe and effective working conditions for our members. At a recent SDA Site Representative Training, it was suggested by our members to gather and establish clear and concise information and guidelines regarding the law, policy, and current practices for properly addressing extreme and, at times, aggressive behaviors. We have communicated with CTA Legal as well to gain a better understanding of our legal responsibilities in these types of circumstances. To what degree are we liable for reporting extreme and aggressive behaviors? Not only internally at a site and district level, but with law enforcement as well. Our hope is to provide clear and consistent guidance to our members. And then moving on, at the end of this month, our Executive Board and bargaining team members will be attending the CTA Region III Leadership Conference. We plan on dividing and conquering to attend as many sessions as possible with topics including budget, bargaining, leadership, grievances, bylaws, ed code, discipline, and school safety, educator and safety rights, strategic planning, candidate recruitment, organizing, building community partnership, and more. We know, as a local union leadership, it is important for us to stay abreast of best practices and trends in education as we continue to advocate for our members, students, and community. On behalf of our proud SDA members, I thank you for your time.
Next up, Ms. Sylvia Arnon with CSCEA.
Good evening, Cabinet, Board members, community members, and families. And we'd like to congratulate tonight's marvelous mathematicians. Mathematics is the language of logical reasoning. You are amazing students who exhibit such a wonderful skill. Keep multiplying your remarkable success. We have been back in school for about a month, and our classified employees are facing many challenges. Behaviors continue to be of great concern. We appreciate the teamwork spirit present at many sites and have noticed more support coming in from all classifications. We are definitely taking steps in the right direction. However, these increasing challenges are making our jobs significantly more difficult. Our safety is a concern. Many of our classified employees have been reaching out since the email notification of increased medical premiums was sent out. Some of our 6.5 paraeducators, who currently pay $8 per month, will see an increase to $145. We can do the math on how many times we need to multiply eight to get to 145. This is why math is so important, and that would be eighteen times more. Other classified employees will see increases of larger amounts. For many, last year's 2% increase cannot cover this additional cost. This puts stress on many, making lives difficult and unsustainable. Many part-time employees are considering resignation. CSCEA participates in the new employee orientation. Fifty-seven new hires were invited to attend. Fifty-seven. We are happy that support has been implemented in our schools. What remains to be worked on is employee retention. Affordable medical premiums are part of retention, as is proper training and support, and of course, adequate salary. We met with the district for Meet and Confer last week. Our meeting was very productive. We are in the process of finding solutions for our paraeducators and school office employees. Our paraeducators at Bokeh sent this message. "Thank you for addressing the employee morale at Bokeh. Many have expressed their gratitude for many changes. Special ed paraeducators are now feeling supported. After coming back to some major changes in their program, they are looking forward to an amazing year with their fabulous new principal, Ms. Stephanie, and this is great news. This week, we will begin negotiations and present our sunshine proposals. We are working towards positive changes. As Nelson Mandela once said, 'It always seems impossible until it's done.'" Thank you.
Next up, Ms. Cheryl Cameron, Saugus Administrators Association.
Good evening, SUSD Board President, Governing Board, Cabinet. I am Cheryl Cameron, Principal of Tesoro Del Valle, and I'm proud to address you tonight on behalf of the Saugus administrators. So first, a congratulation to the students who were honored earlier tonight with the Marvelous Math Award. Their success is a great reminder of the creativity, perseverance, and problem-solving skills our students are developing every day. Among the Maasai people of Kenya, there's a greeting, Kasarian Ngara. It means, "And how are the children?" The well-being of the children is considered the truest measure of a community's health and prosperity. I can think of no better question for us as educators and leaders. Tomorrow night, we'll have our annual data meeting, or Data Fest, as I like to call it, and every piece of data we gather is, in essence, our way of asking, "How are the children?" At our school sites, we have been gathering and analyzing all sorts of data as the year begins: eye-ready diagnostics, CASP state test scores from spring, the basic phonics skills tests for our primary students, the LPAC, or English Language Proficiency Assessments for California, for our English learners, and common formative assessments made by our professional learning teams show how our students are progressing toward mastery of essential skills. Panorama surveys, behavior referral data, and attendance reports help us understand how students are feeling, whether they feel safe, connected, and ready to learn. Data gives us the honest answer. Together, these numbers ensure we don't just see scores, we do see the whole child, and that no child falls through the cracks. The real power of all this data is how we use it. As of last week, when our TK and kindergarten students are dismissed earlier in the day, their teachers are stepping in with other grade-level teams to provide targeted Tier Two and Three intervention for first through third-grade students. At other grade levels, teachers group students flexibly across classrooms, providing those same supports. Our school's social workers and behavior support team analyze panorama and referral data to identify patterns, which in turn help us identify which students may need small-group interventions, which families might benefit from extra outreach, and when the timing of support can make the greatest difference. It's important to understand what we mean by tiers of support. Tier One is the foundation: high-quality instruction, PBIS expectations, and social-emotional learning for all students. Tier Two is for those who need a little more to meet grade-old standards, such as small-group instruction, reteaching, behavior check-ins. And Tier Three is the most intensive support for the students with the greatest needs, who may need remediation and prior-grade-level learning. Data is what helps us create small and individual intervention groups and to move students fluidly as their needs change. As principals, our role is to make sure that when someone asks, "And how are the children?", we can say confidently, "Our children are learning, our children are supported, and when they struggle, we notice and we respond." Thank you, Board and Cabinet, for continually asking in every meeting and every decision you make, "How are the children?" Your commitment and support of us and our staff ensures that our data, which we will look at in detail tomorrow together, is never just numbers, but a living reminder of the health and promise of our students and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Tatiana Gasparian, PTA President from Tesoro Del Valle.
Good evening, Saugus Union School District Board President, Governing Board, and Cabinet, and congratulations to all Marvelous Math Award recipients. My name is Tatiana Gasparian, and I'm the President of Tesoro Del Valle PTA for 2025-2026 school year, and it is my pleasure to share with you the wonderful updates about parent participation and parent leadership at our school and our organization. This year, our goal is to increase the involvement of our community and make every story matter. We are so excited to welcome all the new families and see the outpouring of support from parents and school staff. We began our year strong with a membership drive. We're currently at 357 active members. However, we're not slowing down. Our goal is 100% membership for the school, and we are at 65%, a little over a month since the school year started. This figure already surpassed the overall membership of the previous years, and it is very indicative of how our community is growing and their willingness to contribute to the overall student experience at Tesoro. Speaking of our community growing, we all know that we've grown in numbers, and it is showing in our volunteer numbers. The new families are actively participating in events, signing up to volunteer, and are asking important questions. As PTA President, I am so happy to see that the new parents at school are so invested in the experience for their children. We, as volunteers, are driven by exactly that. We, as volunteers, are driven by exactly that, and seeing so much support is actually incredible. We have many wonderful events planned, starting with one of all-time favorites, Penny Wars fundraiser. We will then move on to finishing up reflections. What we introduced this year and are planning to carry on forward is informational sessions and booths. We've held one for reflections, and it was very successful. We've had many families stop by, share their artistic stories and journeys, and show us how excited they were that such a program exists. This showed how important these types of conversations can be for our organization and our school. Just 15 minutes at dismissal helped us connect and learn so much about our community members and students. With the utmost support from our Principal, Ms. Cameron, we're planning to hold more of these informational sessions in this kind of informal format to get to know our students and their stories and to share what we do to make their experience at school more fulfilling. The work on the full festival is well underway, and I'm so proud to say that a new parent to our school has taken on enormous task of chairing this event. Their story is wonderful, and they're now part of our community, contributing their time, effort, and enthusiasm. We will round up 2025 with a book fair and holiday activities. Every meeting and every conversation that I have with our Board and our members just makes me so much more appreciative of our school family. We're grateful for the support, and we're looking forward to a wonderful school year filled with great stories and wonderful memories. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Ms. Katie Dempsher with the Child Development Programs.
Good evening, Governing Board, Cabinet, and guests. I'm Katie Dempsher, Director of Categorical and Special Programs. I'm pleased to share a brief update regarding our current programming. Our preschool teachers just completed their annual training with Learning Genie. We continue using this platform to complete the desired results developmental profiles for our preschool students. Every year, our preschool teachers complete observations and a summary prior to meeting with parents in the fall to collaboratively develop goals with those parents. This process is repeated in the spring to document growth and progress so that our youngest learners receive support toward their continued development. In our Child Development Program, we provided a training day in August prior to students' return to the school year. We're excited to share an additional upcoming training. This Saturday morning, all CDP employees, TK paraeducators supporting our CDP program, and our current substitutes in the program have been invited to attend this hands-on training opportunity to ensure we're collectively providing structure and engaging activities for our students as a part of our Extended Learning Opportunities Program Plan. It's a great opportunity for us to come together now that we have been about a month into the school year and our program. We will have opportunities to discuss student engagement strategies as well and reinforce our curriculum expectations for all students. It will also give us the opportunity to train our staff on some newly ordered items that are supposed to arrive in time, selected specifically to address the developmental needs of our transitional kindergarten and kindergarten students. Almost half of our employees so far have RSVP'd that they will be in attendance. Thank you for your continued support. Have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you. Moving on to our Cabinet reports, Ms. Berry's.
Good evening, everyone. I want to again say congratulations to all the Marvelous Math Award recipients, and I am very thankful for our colleagues and members who are mathematicians.
Hey, good evening, everyone. We're excited to have everyone at the special board meeting tomorrow. It's a fun night that we can take a look to see how the children are doing. I think that's how Mrs. Cameron put it. Other than that, we're busy getting going and keeping going.
Thank you, Mr. Coopman. Just congratulations to our Mathematician Award winners. Okay, Board members?
Yeah, thank you. I don't have anything to report this evening, but I did want to thank everyone for being here this evening, families, community, and staff, particularly the Plum Canyon staff for showing out. Thank you very much, and thank you to all who spoke. We do appreciate it, and we do hear you. In particular, I wanted to thank Ms. Cameron for her words. Indeed, that Maasai greeting of "How are the children?" truly touches me as it indicates a couple of things. One, it's the community's recognition that we are all responsible for the upbringing of the community's children. It is also the recognition of the ultimate accountability that we recognize that the status of the children project the outcomes of the future. And so by checking in on the children, we're recognizing what the Maasai know. Tell me how the children are, and I'll tell you how the people are. And indeed, last meeting, we heard about how our children are doing. We're going to hear a lot more detail tomorrow night, and I'm looking forward to hearing about that. But I do want to remind us all that the academic status of our children is just but one measure of how our children are doing, and we continue to hear that there are other areas that need our attention, our continued attention, and our more in-depth attention. And so I look forward to continue to look into the issues that we're having, the concerns that our families and our staff are bringing forward to us, and continuing to take those head-on, because these issues, as we see, are not short-term, they're long-term. They're going to require our long-term and in-depth and dedicated attention. Thank you.
Ms. Drunky?
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations again to all of our Marvelous Math Award winners. This past week, I attended the Patriot Day Assembly at Sky Blue. Thank you to Mrs. Covington for your hospitality there. And this past week, I also went on a tour of the Sun Ridge Development. For those of you that don't know, Sun Ridge is what's more commonly known as the former Whittaker-Bermite property. It's about a thousand-acre development that's smack dab in the middle of Santa Clarita. It's still about three or four years away from getting its permits and approvals in place and to start moving dirt. But it was interesting to see that property and all of the plans for it, and it's going to have a huge impact on our community. And other than that, I am looking forward to the special meeting tomorrow night. Thank you.
Ms. Cooper?
I attended the Patriot Day celebration, commemoration on Thursday at Helmers. It's watching the kids lead their first responder, you know, parents, grandparents, uncles and aunts, up to the podium, and just they're so proud of them, and we should all be very proud of them and thankful for them. I appreciated that it was not only a memory of something terrible that happened, but also a celebration of the people who helped out and who continue to help out. And so I was very grateful and honored to be there. Mrs. Gasparian, thank you for stepping up. I see Mrs. Jess there also. PTA is the icing on the cake, and we're so appreciative for what you do every day. Mr. Smilers, thank you for showing up, and Mr. and Mrs. Lund continuing to be involved with the Santa Clarita property. And all of those meetings are public meetings, and so I encourage you to keep coming and, you know, letting us know how you feel, and thank you.
Yeah, typically, I don't really have that much to say, but tonight, I feel like I do. I do want to talk about Santa Clarita Elementary. I know we are having a presentation later today, but I do want to remind the public that we are spending money monthly to maintain that property. From the district, we're almost at $14,000 a month in order to maintain that property. I know that the 7-11 committee wants us to move quickly. Every month that goes by where we do not address Santa Clarita, the proposals, having discussions, we are spending $13.8,000 a month to maintain that property. We are also providing services to the, I forget the name, Santa Clarita Food Service, is that what they're called? School Day Cafe. So I just really wanted to remind the community and to the Board that while in the proposal, it lists short-term and long-term proposal in terms of how long this is going to take, we are spending money on this every single month that could be used towards something else. So I just wanted to remind the public that that is happening and reiterate again that all board study sessions are public and would be great to have community members come to those meetings to hear the actual discussions. I know there's a lot of miscommunication or no communication within the process, and I urge everybody to attend to actually hear what is going on. It's, you know, you're right, and it's, I think, your responsibility as community members to do that. Second, I want to get an understanding of the zoning process of Santa Clarita Elementary. When we do close the school, what happens? Redistricting, what are the options? And I think we owe it to the community and those family members who don't have a homeschool and need a homeschool and might be feeling that they're being looked over, especially with the new communities under development. So I will formally put that in writing, since I know nothing that I say in here is going to happen. So I will put that in writing. This third thing, I don't know what to say about the behaviors within SUSD. I've been on this board almost three years. I have been talking about it since February, where I reported on an incident at an elementary school. I was called a liar. I was accused of making it up, of writing the letter myself, of communicating it to the public, and it has not changed. Some things might be getting better, but we are almost three years into that, and I'm sorry, but it's not getting better. I would love for Ms. Boyston to not come up to the podium anymore outside of her communicating how well this is going, the progress that we are seeing within our behaviors within the community. I would love for that to happen. I would love for families to stop emailing, as we got one this week. I would love families to stop coming up to the podium and talking about it, but I personally don't know what else to do. I have been talking about this for three years. I am not getting any persistence or even an understanding of, yes, this is priority number one. We do a really good job about reporting data out about closing the achievement gap. Really good. We have really good results over the last couple of years, and that is amazing because of the data. But what about the data regarding behaviors? Where is that? I keep asking for it. I keep asking for an update almost every single meeting, and there isn't one. I don't see anything personally that is telling me that we are progressing in the way that we should be. Yes, there are areas that are working, right? Capturing kids' hearts, there are things that teachers are doing really well and that they love. I get it. But there are other things that aren't working and aren't being addressed, and I'm tired of talking about it. I really am. And I don't know what else to do to get people to be on the same page. And I urge the community to keep talking, to keep bringing this up. CSA, our teachers, everybody, to keep talking about it. And what I find really strange is that week after week, month after month, our administrators are coming up and talking, and our teachers are coming up, and our CSEA reps and staff members are coming up, and it's two completely different stories, and I don't understand it. I don't. So I'd love for everyone to be on the same page. One is protected, one is not, I get it. But what I don't understand is the disconnect. We're not addressing it clearly, because one side is saying one thing, one side is saying the other thing. And I don't know what to believe, even though I know what I believe and I know what's happening, because I have literally witnessed it with my own eyes when I had a child in this district. So I know it's happening. So I'm going to get off my soapbox. I'm tired, I just... Got, I'm not done yet. Got to fix this. The last thing that I want to talk about, and this is a personal note, and I'm going to say these are my beliefs. They are not the board beliefs, because if I don't say that, I will get in trouble publicly and behind the scenes. I want to talk about the recent assassination of Charlie Kirk last week. It highlights our importance of protecting our freedom of speech and the value of open dialogue in our community. It's essential that we are creating an environment where individuals feel safe to ask questions, express differing viewpoints without fear of retaliation or litigation. Encouraging respectful discussion can help us better understand one another and strengthen our community. So I hope that we can all do better moving forward. I hope that we can have open conversations and open dialogue without feeling like we're aliens or that we don't know what we're talking about. So, thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any items to remove? D3? Yeah. Okay, anything else? No? Okay. So move to approve the items on the consent calendar. Can I get a motion?
I will move, should we pull D3 first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I move that we approve item D3?
D3, okay.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Okay, moving...
I move that we approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
All those in, or, sorry, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to presentations, timeline for Santa Clarita Elementary.
Good evening, Board members, community, Cabinet. Thank you for having me tonight. Just a little bit of background before I get going. Of course, the goal is tonight to present a general timeline and propose next steps for the former Santa Clarita Elementary School. And for those who are of the members of the community who are just joining the process and in the spirit of transparency, also providing some background on the process that the district and Asset Management Committee has engaged to get to this point and bring everybody up to speed, and hopefully, the community can follow along in this process. Again, reiterating some of the board members' comments that the goal is to have an open and transparent and public process as we move through the next steps. Next slide. Again, just for background, a little bit of information about the property itself. So of course, the property under consideration that was reviewed by the Asset Management Committee and is now going to be reviewed by the Board and for the Board to provide some input and their recommendations for next steps and then take action on that. The former Santa Clarita Elementary School site located at 27177 Seco Canyon Road. It is an approximate acreage of 9.3 acres, and I do want to emphasize that this is approximate and has not been surveyed. That would be part of the process of due diligence, which we'll cover in the later slides. The zoning, which I know has come up a couple times tonight, is public-institutional. So what zoning speaks to is how can the property be used? And if you were to look at the public-institutional uses in the municipal code for the Santa Clarita city, and of course, that's available publicly, it will outline currently how can that property be used, what's an allowable use and what's a permitted use. And we can talk some more about that, and also, that'll be part of the future study sessions. And then a little bit of information about the surrounding uses, and again, more information will be developed on this. You have residential uses as well as open space uses around the site. Next slide. A little bit of background on the process that the Asset Management Advisory Committee engaged in, which was a very robust one. On March 26, 2024, the Board approved a resolution authorizing the formation of the committee for the former Santa Clarita Elementary School. And what the committee is charged with under the Education Code is to provide recommendations for use or disposition options for the site. And under the Education Code, there are certain ways in which school district property can be disposed of. And when we use that term, that means sale, lease, exchange, community partnerships, all of the things that the recommendations speak to. How do you achieve those under the Education Code statutes and in some cases, under the government? And through the process that the Asset Management Committee engaged in, you'll see further down that there were approximately... which you'll see further down, that there were approximately 10 meetings that occurred between July 22, 2024, and May 7, 2025. The committee received information about what those potential options are and then was able to develop recommendations, which we'll see in the next slide. Also, I wanted to point out that because the asset management committee is what we call a Brown Act committee, it's formed by the board, and it is, their meetings are held publicly. And just like tonight's meeting, agendas are posted at least 72 hours in advance so that the community can make a determination if they'd like to attend the meetings and participate in the process and provide public comment. So to emphasize that all of those meetings were conducted pursuant to the Brown Act. On October 30, 2024, importantly, as the asset management committee was doing their work, a, a community meeting was held to receive input from the community on some of the, the uses that they would like to see on the site. And all of those recommendations were then developed into a, a presentation of the percentage of, for example, recommend, recommended use for residential use or potential other uses, whether it's community partnership or other things, to receive the community's input and for that to inform the recommendation of the committee. And on April 30, 2025, the committee held a public hearing. This is a very important part of the education code process for asset management committees. And that includes publicly, of course, advertising that the meeting will occur and then for community members to provide their input on the draft recommendations that the committee developed. And then the committee can further assess and develop those recommendations to come to a final report that is presented to the board. At the August 19, 2025 meeting, the committee chair presented the recommendation report. That was a very thorough cross recommendation that Chair Shea gave and to bring the community and the board up to speed on what the asset management committee had engaged in. Next slide, please. And again, we'll cover the recommendations that were made by the committee. But importantly, all of the committee's agendas, minutes, and presentations that were given to the committee, along with the recommendation report, are posted on the district's website at the, on the asset management committees. And of course, the community is encouraged to go back, review, and, and, and take a look at how the recommendations were developed, along with reviewing the final report. Committee's recommendations from the report. Of course, importantly, the first recommendation is what the committee does not want to see the property developed. So again, following that community input process that occurred and the robust community input that was received during the asset management meeting process, the first recommendation is property not to be used or developed for future residential or commercial purposes. But if you look at recommendation two and three, and I'm not gonna read these verbatim, but just touch on, highlight the important parts of them. Of course, it's all important, but please feel free to go back and read them in full. The advisory committee recommends that the board pursue both short-term and long-term leasing options with the aim to optimize the property's value. And then, of course, there's some additional important verbiage in there for the community to review. But that directs the board to consider short-term and long-term leasing options. And then the third recommendation, that the board consider partnering with local, public agencies and our nonprofit organizations to develop operating making programs or services on the property. So that's another important recommendation, providing the board with the committee's input about the board assessing opportunities for community partnerships. Next slide. Recommendation four, that the board consider developing public-facing community facilities that provide cultural, civic, and recreational benefits to children in the community. Recommendation five, that the board explore the development of community green space or recreational fields that offer opportunities for park expansion, open space, athletic programming, and other community activities. Recommendation six, that the board preserve and maintain the architectural integrity and landscaping of the site. And recommendation seven, that the board act expeditiously and thoughtfully to prevent the property from sitting vacant. So again, of course, these are more detailed than the, the summaries that I'm giving. But I wanted to touch on the important aspects of the recommendations, because that then leads us into the next slide and the next proposed steps with the board. So we can move to the next slide. So the amendments, though, with recommendations two and three, short-term, long-term, and public partnerships were emphasized. And it's important, just like the, the asset management committee was given information on how some of those recommendations can be achieved, for the board to receive similar information in study sessions, both walking through the ed code procurement steps and also the due diligence and entitlement requirements that they would have to meet in order to achieve the recommendations of the committee. And an important note there, that these are general steps that we've outlined in the next few slides and with the goal of aligning with the recommendations from the committee. But depending on the project's scope and procurement statutes, the process and timeline is subject to change. So I did want to emphasize that, and we'll continue to talk about that as we move into the next slide. Just at a high level, in order for short-term, long-term, and public partnership options to be delivered, typically, there are procurement steps that would have to be complied with. So what we've identified there in terms of the joint use, joint occupancy, and Community Recreation Act are some of the statutes that the asset management committee received information on that I hope to also provide to the board more information on and then tie into the recommendations on how those statutes would help achieve some of those recommendations. And again, each of those have their own procurement steps, which we'll cover as we're moving through the study session process. And I don't want to say that the study session will be limited to these statutes, but I did for this presentation want to tie in the ones that relate specifically to the committee's recommendations. Next slide. So what we have here is a general overview of the current timeline. We did cover a little bit about what will be discussed in the study sessions. So the first study session is scheduled for November 6, 2025. There would be at least one or two follow-up study sessions. And of course, the first one will inform what additional information would be presented at the follow-on sessions just based on, and I think the asset management committee members are familiar with this, that because there is a lot of material to cover, it does take some time to get through what's allowable under the education code and the government code. And the goal is to provide the board with that information in a, in a robust and complete way so that the board can make an informed next step on potential property disposition. The second step we have highlighted there is to bring consultants to assist with the next steps for asset management planning. There is oftentimes needed as part of this process, real property consultants who can assist with developing a potential proposed project of a site so that then the board can also receive input on that, on that project plan. And part of that includes, okay, what is the highest invest-use opportunities and options for the site? Also considering the recommendations that the board has received from the committee as well as valuing the site so that the board knows, okay, generally, what they can potentially pursue and what the related valuation would be for the lease option, for example. If that's something the board is looking to consider down the road. We touched on developing the proposed project. So what that would entail is, what is it that the, what is the vision for the site? And what would the, the board and the district team like to receive proposals on in order to pursue a potential longer-term development or a shorter-term lease option, as the committee has recommended? Or if, for example, it's also gonna be combined with a, a partnership with a community group or a sister community agency? What could that proposed project look like? And then that will inform what we would call the request for proposals process, where that would be described and proposals would be received to achieve that end goal. And we'll touch on that a little bit in the next slide. We touched on the due diligence process a little bit. And what that typically refers to is, once a proposed project is developed, the district can do the legwork to determine if that proposed project can be built in the way that the district and board are visioning it. Are there title constraints or concerns on the site? Are there geographic constraints that need to be considered that would prevent that project from being developed? A deep assessment on the environmental front as well to see what potential environmental documents would have to be developed in order for that proposed project to be approved. And I did want to make an important point, that depending on how the study sessions go and what the board's direction is, it could be that an RFP could be issued, proposals could be received, and then the entity or entities that are selected to potentially move the project forward would do the more intense due diligence work, which we see in a lot of our projects. But it could also be that the district decides to do that work upfront and shoulder some of those costs itself. So it really is one of the things that we'll talk through during the study sessions. The last bullet on that page, on that slide, follow, follow steps for procurement process depending on the statutes being utilized. Again, we touched on that, but each of the statutes that were presented in this presentation, as well as other controls we'll touch on, have their own procurement steps, which will then inform the timeline and next steps that get developed. Next slide. So if, if a request for proposals is issued and proposals are received, of course, the board in an open meeting would review those proposals and make its determination of one that they believe they want to move forward with and, and make a selection accordingly. Depending on the statutes that are being utilized, there are standards by which the board would make that selection. And again, that'll depend on the statutory scheme that's being used. And then, like anything else, of course, agreements would be negotiated. And if the final agreement is reached, then the board, of course, would still have to approve that. All of it is subject to board approval at very many stages of the process. And as we get deeper into outlining the procedure, we can talk about where exactly, of course, the board has approval authority in, in this, in this process. One area where I did want to point out, again, entitlements themselves are not, are, are, sometimes the entitlement authority is not the school district. So depending on what the project is, the entitlements could be all in the city's court. So both for environmental approvals, land use approvals, and, and whatever other approvals would be required for the developed project. And so that's where we see the longest estimate in this timeline for what would it take to get through an entitlement process that is within another entitlement agency's purview and control. So of course, the school district can't control the city's process and the city's review process. So if the entitlement agency is going to be the city, then that process could take some time. And they'll have requirements for going through environmental review and other procedures and steps that will have to be complied with. And that's all subject to what the project's scope is and what's the. And project implementation, again, that depends on the project's scope and how quickly, of course, the entitlement process moves and the final approval from the board to then implement the project. And I've provided there's some estimated timelines. Of course, hopefully, this can move closer to the nine-month to one-year estimate. But again, I did want to highlight that there are certain parts of the process that could be outside of the district's control. And that sometimes is where we see the longer term, particularly with regard to environmental documents and, and the environmental scope for a potential project approval. And that concludes the presentation. I will open it up.
Any questions?
Ms. Abrahamian, thank you very much. Appreciate your support throughout this process and continued support moving forward. I don't necessarily have a question for you, but more probably for our colleagues and, and the cabinet. We're gonna be meeting on November 6th for our first study session. And it sounds like we will probably need at least several other study sessions following that one. Are we planning on discussing subsequent dates at our next regular board meeting or at the November 6th meeting?
I think we can do either, right? It's on the agenda, so I think if we wanted to, we could proactively look.
We can do it tonight?
We could.
All right. I would just like to see, you know, we heard, especially from Mr. Samuelson, you know, an interest the public has in, in not only expediting the process, but getting clear updates on, on how things are going. And so I think if we can let the public know as soon as possible when those meetings are gonna be, I like the idea of, you know, posting some sort of update. I know it's easy to post agendas and minutes on our website. But I think we can do something that's even a little bit more, not so much clear, but conspicuous, so that our, our community can follow the process easily.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Thanks.
I know we chose November 6th because it was already a special.
It was already on the calendar.
Yeah. Can we float around dates before that?
Yeah, I believe that, that Serene has some dates to propose.
Perfect.
That she's available.
She's actually gonna propose. After the first one, November 11 and November 19. I, I wish, I have more options to present, but those are the two that I think, just based on the calendar and the information that, that I think will have to be developed for the next meeting. If those work great, if not, then I can consider other options as well.
Do you have anything higher to the six?
11th and 19th. So the only, the issue I see with the 11th is that's Veterans Day.
It's a holiday.
It's a holiday. So that might not work, but.
I think what Kat, what Ms. Cooper is asking is before 11/6. We are, it is, it, it will be three months, almost three months from the time that we heard the proposal from the committee. Three months sounds like a long time to wait. So is there anything? And I know that I've asked this question and I haven't gotten a response back. So I'm hoping maybe tonight you have the answer. I don't know if anybody reached out to you to ask. By your expression, I'm saying, I'm thinking, no, which.
I, I haven't prepared any dates in October for consideration, but if that's something that the board wants to offer, I can, of course, check my calendar.
Yeah, I think I posed this question back in August to go back to, to go back to the team and ask if there's an earlier date and it looks like it wasn't done.
No, I think there were, it was requested of me, but, you know, there, there was some concerns around scheduling on my end. But in addition, there are some recent changes in the law that are in flux. And I think the goal is to bring the information back that's more concrete for the study sessions. And unfortunately, we thought, we being, I thought that some of that would be squared away sooner rather than later, but it's looking like it's gonna take a little bit of time to get some clarity on those legislative changes so that I can present on them in a way that is clear for the board and for the public.
What are the changes?
It's Assembly Bill 130 that updated some provisions in the Surplus Land Act that could potentially impact the state district process, the school district K-12 process that we've covered in depth with the asset management committee.
Sorry, Ed, can you, like, like I'm a five-year-old? Like, what does that mean? What does that mean?
So it's a little bit involved. So that's what I wanted to be able to spend some time to develop so that I can present in a more robust way.
I can give you an example, though. So for a city, the Surplus Land Act, when the city tries to sell land, they can't just sell land. So they actually have to basically send out information to anybody that's interested in, in buying it. And for cities, it's specific to, to housing. So you have to send it out to anybody that's, that could potentially be interested in buying that property for housing. And then after that, if nobody bids or nobody wants to move forward, then you can do something else with it. So that's how it works with the city, not the school district. I don't know how it works here, but that's, that's how I know it works with the city.
And the district has its own very robust process that is a little bit similar to the Surplus Land Act. But the school district is exempted from some of the provisions of the Surplus Land Act. What this recent law did is it, it removed a couple of those exemptions. And the reason why the law's in flux is because it was added to AB 130 very late in the process and then immediately went for approval. And the, the concern is that it wasn't fully assessed as to the impact to school districts. So some of that work is being done now, and there could potentially be a reversal of the law. So the, the goal is to have a little bit of time in the next couple of weeks for that to get further developed or resolved. So that, of course, so that's part of the consideration as well in building a little bit of time into the schedule.
So I hear you saying that the legislature passed some legislation before fully considering how it might. So I hear you saying that the legislature passed some legislation before fully considering how it might impact schools. Go figure, um, and it's gonna take you a little bit of time to get full clarity on that before you're ready to, to share that with us. I- in a manner that would allow us to proceed.
Correct, cuz that'll be an important part of the study session presentations.
Okay, um, but then following the sixth, you're available the eleventh and the nineteenth. I'm available both, but I, I get it, but I don't wanna impose on staff on a holiday.
But the nineteenth, we could absolutely, yeah.
You know, would like to propose that we put that on our calendar.
Mm-hmm.
I'm fine with both of those days.
You as well.
I am fine in theory.
I don't think we're supposed to ask questions, but. Not normally, we, this is not a, it's not a citizen interaction, it's just for the board to listen in presentation, but I appreciate you raising your hand. Yeah, um, okay, so, so I guess the first question was whether or not we're um, comfortable moving forward on the sixth. It sounds like everybody's okay with that date, I know we prefer a date sooner than that, but for now, we can keep that date locked in, we have the nineteenth locked in. Um, can we look at other dates later in October, um, cuz you, you may have an update on that, that.
Later in.
October before, if we can squeeze it in and maybe we don't, you know, figure it out today, because I think you need to look at your calendar and kinda figure out.
Do you think you'll have that information sorted out by late October?
That's the hope, you know, that's the hope.
Okay.
I mean, it's not really gonna hurt us too much to get the information with the caveat that like, these things might change. We could, but at least it would keep the process moving.
I would vote for meeting earlier, I mean, we're paying, right, for this process and the public is paying for this process. So if we can do it earlier with a caveat of this might change, I think we should.
So, um.
So I, it sounds like we're all yes to the eleventh and nineteen, but if you can provide earlier dates.
This, the sixth and the nineteen.
Six and the nineteen.
Six and the nineteen.
The eleventh is Veterans Day.
I don't think anybody's gonna.
Oh, okay, well, I would, but.
So then do we want to um, maybe propose something, of course, uh, pending your calendar, Ms. Abrahamian? Um, something that last week in October? Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm at a conference.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I could do the thirtieth. That's, yeah.
October thirtieth, that's fine.
Thirtieth, I could do October thirtieth.
That works for me.
Great.
So you'll let us know, okay, perfect, okay, so October thirtieth, November sixth and the nineteen.
So I just wanna clarify, Ms. Abrahamian, you, you can put that on your calendar, we can set that date now?
So I have all my other board.
You don't, okay.
And these are the public attending, so community members, I would drop that down.
It's the thirty, eleven, sixth and eleven, nineteen.
Dr. Stevenson, I would hope that we could get this on the website as well, as soon as possible, these dates.
What I would encourage any member of the public that wants to be notified at the meetings and to receive the agenda, there is a place on the website where you can go. And you can be added to the email list and you could, will get an email of the, the meeting notice, um, along with uh, the agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Heinlein? What should we do?
We all have parent square as well, can we communicate through parent square?
It's only for parents.
It's parents, yes, but now it's the general.
You can definitely do it for the parents.
Can you do an uh, signal K H T S, things that we have done in the past for.
Yeah, we can have that a press release.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's something that our community partners would love to hear and help us spread the word about.
Absolutely. I have a question for you, what is the, um, so the, the location is on public institutional? Do you know what you're able to, to do based on that zoning?
That's actually one of the questions I predicted for tonight, so. So for permitted uses, where it's just allowed by right, um, accessory dwelling unit. Will family, family daycare, residential service slash care home, supportive housing and medical.
That's in public institutional? Wow, okay, interesting.
But, but again, I, I will verify this more deeply and bring back more information, cuz that's of course in shorthand, so. If you read the code, it's got a little more.
Sure, yeah.
So the city has already expressed interest, can we invite them to make a proposal at one of these three meetings? Or do we have to open it up to everyone first?
I'm gonna suggest we hold off on requesting proposals right now.
Okay.
Sure.
I think as they have been with the asset management committee meetings, but yeah, once, because it's gonna be a public procurement process, then they would have the option of, of course. Making a proposal like others.
Okay.
I don't disagree with your comment though, I think it, I think you can do both, right? So there's an opportunity to learn the, the options while also exploring, you know, because we have had interest from different groups. Or at least from the city, um, so, you know.
Do we have to wait until we've done multiple meetings before we can put out a request for a proposal? Cuz even if we receive proposals, we don't necessarily have to act on them if we decide to go in a different direction.
It's almost like an information, um, it's an opportunity to get information, right? So you say, hey, we have this and, you know, we wanna know if anybody's interested in doing something, what, what is that proposal? You're not committing to anything, you're just saying, what are some, you know, what are some different options that maybe we wouldn't consider during our study sessions, right?
Yeah, cuz then both things can be happening at once.
That's kinda what I was.
No, I mean, put out a public, like a, an open.
Public review, yeah.
Proposal that can be happening while we're learning.
Right, but the project has to be developed for what you're seeking proposals for. So that's what the board's gonna inform with the options that are presented.
Yeah, I don't think it would be a very good idea for us to ask for proposals when we're not in a position. To either evaluate them or act on them, um, at the end of the day.
Well, I, Ms. Garabey said like, they, there might be an idea that we haven't even thought about of. That, that comes up. I mean, we're not gonna decide exactly what's gonna happen, cuz we're not gonna know who's gonna be interested.
Right.
Necessarily.
Then what's the harm in understanding different ideas and different proposals, like legally? Like if you're communicating that any, everyone and anyone could submit a proposal, like what's the harm in doing so?
But there has to be a document that outlines what you're seeking proposals for, that would be the RFP, the Request for Proposals. And so for that document to be prepared, developed and issued, there would have to be some direction for the board of what is, is the board seeking or receive proposals? On what is the project and also some community input is required as part of that process as well.
So can we put out a request for ideas that, that doesn't have.
Request for information, yeah. So. Okay. I think we can.
We can mend it and do it, it's two different things though.
We can table it, I think it's something we can talk about at our first meeting, um, because I don't disagree that that might be a good idea. Again, just with the, the thought process being that we, you may get something that you wouldn't have thought of, right? So it's, it's not a bad idea to say, this is what we have, what, what do you propose? And just like everything else that we're gonna consider, you kinda look at it and you say, hey, this works, it doesn't, it's not committing you to anything, so. But we can maybe talk about it the first meeting, if that works, everybody, okay? Okay, so I think we have the direction we needed, we have dates um, for our first meeting. Last meet, last week of October is the first meeting, second is on uh, November sixth and then our last one will be on November nineteenth.
So are we, are we going in order, cuz I have questions, I don't know if Mr. Trunkie wants to go, or what are we doing?
Um, the only other thi, the only other question I had was another question for um, Mr. Heinlein, because we're talking about Santa Clarita. Um, and it came up from a couple of the, the speakers. Um, the third-party service that we use on the website that does the school maps, the attendance area maps. Is there um, a, a delay in getting them to process an update? Um, cuz obviously Santa Clarita is still listed on there.
Well, our boundaries haven't changed, so we need to at some point go through the process.
Presumably, the people that live in the area that is Santa Clarita have been assigned. Um, either by attending another school, um, or have been assigned to a, another school for attendance. Is that correct?
We had, the, for this year, the students that live within the Santa Clarita attendance area should be directed towards foster. Okay, so to get that put on the website.
To redraw those for next year?
That's.
The whole process.
You, yes.
It's like a.
That, that you, you typically need a report prepared to advise on options and then what's like the option for uh, redrawing the boundaries.
So shouldn't we do that, I mean, if we're hearing, I mean, is it?
Absolutely, but there's, like, we're trying to do the Santa Clarita thing as well. So I don't know if, like, as soon as, in my mind, as soon as a Santa Clarita item is kind of buttoned up, is when we should start this boundary. Conversation, because it will also have with it potential study sessions and different maps and different changes to boundaries. Like was brought up tonight, it might be better that part of an area that now we're saying is foster might be better for emblem. Those types of, of items will come up and there'll be options and.
But that could be like three years.
If we start that in November, December, can we have it done before the next school year? I mean, how long does that typically take?
I think it could take, um, depending on the issues it could bring up, it could take a long time. Or um, my hope is that we do it in a way that is somewhat natural, right? Because really, we do give parents the options to go to whatever school has room, uh, if there is space available anyway. But there are some places in our district where it makes logical sense to change the boundary. And there are, like, there are pockets that are currently designated, like, um, for instance, Bridgeport. Um, there's a, a, a part of Bridgeport that really makes more sense for those students to go to West Creek. So that may be a very easy conversation, whereas there could be other parts that, that could be not so easy. Um, but my hope is that most of what we change falls in the easy category and then the process could happen quickly. But we would have to have a couple maps drawn and, and everything. What, what's the fastest process you've, you've been a part of for?
About six months.
Well, we could get it done before next school year. And I mean, the point of the zones is, like, I know we have pretty much open enrollment subject to room. But the point of the zones is that the people who live within those zones would have preference at their home school, right? That's, I mean, that's kinda the sole purpose of that.
Yeah, unless they're already there, right?
Well, I mean, obviously, if we redraw, we're like, we're not gonna make everybody move schools, like, it'll.
When, well, when you say preference, you mean that they would have preference over another child that's already at the school?
No, but over like, so if, if somebody wanted to, to transfer, they would have preference over anybody that wanted to transfer in from another zone.
As long as they're not already there.
Okay.
And do we not have agreements or there are at least um, um, indications that. Um, certain developments that are, you know, in the attendance areas of certain schools and are, are. Not guaranteed enrollment there, but are pretty much, um, there's some obligation to take them first, right?
If there's a CFD involved, yes.
So we have to review all of the CFTs, which ones go to where? Um, and then try and draw lots of maps all around to make everybody fit.
So can we agendize it for December and shoot for six months?
I will second that, I think it's our responsibility as a district to do that for the community. What we're doing right now isn't sustainable for the long term.
Just gonna need a lot of your time.
That's fine.
I don't have a life, I'm down with that. Well, I mean, I, I, I would rather spend the time.
Yeah.
Cuz I, I heard frustration and.
I mean, we're meeting on.
And I can understand that, cuz, you know, I, I would like to be able to go. I mean, I, I never had a problem, well, that's not true, I moved when, you know, right before my son went to high school and that really sucked for him. But anyways, that's hard, that's not us, so.
You have three meetings coming up, you could leverage an extra hour. I'm just saying, you've got three meetings coming up.
Okay, so let's move on from, from that conversation, um, but I hear you.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think we should get a couple of months into this process before we decide on. Um, embarking on a whole nother process. See what the time pressures are.
Okay.
We need coffee.
Anything else, Mr. Trunkie?
No, that's it for me.
Ms. Cooper, anything related to?
Uh, no.
Nothing, okay, Ms. Grease.
I do, um, just going back to Ms. Garabey's question about the zoning and just what it's zoned for. I know that you're still doing research, but I just pulled up the um, proposal from the committee. And then in, in just in black and white, it's listing kind of examples of what it's designated for. And then I'm looking at the recommendations from the committee on examples that they included. And I'm a little worried just from the black and white um, description. That some, most of what they're recommending is not included within the zone.
So that, yeah, that's where the city rezon process would come in, that I was describing.
So you'll have an answer at the next meeting, base, maybe based on the recommendations and how that relates to the exact zoning guidelines?
That's the entitlement process.
That's entitled, that's totally separate.
Authorize that use.
Yes.
Permitted uses, or it falls into like what they call the allowable use category, which is easier to get that essential use.
So we wouldn't know that until well after, in which some of these board members up at the dais may not even be board members. Just stating that for public.
It's a process that we don't, we don't lead that process, that's, the city entitlement process is di- different from our process. So they, they would basically go through that rezoning and you can, right? So even if it's not a lot, in allowable use right now, we, it can move forward and then you can rezone to whatever is, whatever the thing is that. Moves forward, I guess.
I just wanted to be clear with the community that based on how long this could take, all of us, half of us may not be up on this dais. So you're gonna have a new board that is gonna be voting on what's gonna be happening with Santa Clarita. I mean, it, it is.
Be, but it could also not be, I mean, it really just depends on the, the proposed project and what the.
Yeah, I'm just, totally, I'm just trying to not sugarcoat it for the, for the public and just to be really black and white. Cuz I think we do a lot of that. I don't know if anybody got there, I just wanted, again, to state the obvious.
I think the presumption though is that the board, this board wants what's best for the community and the district. And the next board will also want what's best for the district and the community, hopefully, I mean.
Okay, Ms. Grease, do you have any other comments?
Um, I, other than that, my one comment is um, for the board. Study sess- sessions, will there be an agenda, what is the goal? Like, what is the end goal of each meeting? And I think that needs to be clearly defined before we go into the meetings, because I've been in a lot of meetings where we're just talking for a long time. And there's no like solution, there's no like takeaway, there's nothing like tangible. So if there's a way that we could get that as a board, that would be great for each one, to try and stick to the shortest timeline possible. That would be great.
That's, that's very doable.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we have our dates and we have an understanding of the timeline, thank you so much, Ms. Abrahamian, we appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for your flexibility as well, appreciate that.
We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to education services, hold public hearing related to Williams Act and compliance with Education Code six zero one one nine. And funds received under the People Textbook and Instructional Materials Program, sufficiency of instructional materials. Open the public hearing at eight twenty P M. Do I have to read this? So the governing board now opens a public hearing related to compliance with the Williams Act and Education Code section six zero one one nine. This is the time and place designated for the public hearing on the Sagus Union School District. Governing Board certifying that during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, each pupil enrolled in transitional kindergarten, kindergarten and grades one through six. Was furnished sufficient textbooks or instructional materials or both in each subject that is consistent with the curriculum frameworks adopted by the state. Can staff confirm that district has received proof of publication of notices and made all appropriate filings required for the public hearing?
Yes, okay.
I didn't hear it, yes, I confirm the proof of application and notices received are on file. Um, with the district filings made for the compliance with Williams Act and Education Code section six zero one one nine.
Hey, the public hearing is now open, do we have any comments regarding sufficiency of textbooks? No, okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing at eight. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing at eight twenty one, and we will declare that the public hearing is closed. Okay, moving on to approved resolution twenty five, twenty six, number twenty six, a resolution of the governing board of the Saugus Union School District for compliance with the Education Code section six zero one one nine and sufficiency of the materials William Act. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clement?
So this is just a resolution stating that we do have all of our materials in place at all of our school sites. So we've got everything documented and we're good to go.
Thank you, clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Garabey?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Motion passes. Uh, next up, conduct first reading of Board Policies Administrative Regulation and Exhibit E zero 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 zero, Philosophy Goals, Objectives, and Comprehensive Plans.
So, uh, these two policies linked together are if we had somebody who would like to start a charter school and how they would be authorized by the board, and then the second one revolves around monitoring or the oversight of them. It's just really all the rules and all the procedures that they would have to do, and it's, as you can see, very detailed.
Got it, any questions or comments? And this will come back for a second reading, thank you. Okay, moving on to Student Support Services, approved resolution twenty five, twenty six, number nineteen, a resolution of the governing board of the Saugus School District for Participating in Learning Disabilities Awareness Month, can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second, thank you, Mr. Clement? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Berry's.
Uh, annual resolution we bring forward recognizing learning disabilities in the month of October.
Great, any questions? No? Okay, clerk, would you take the roll, please?
Oh, God, I'm so sorry. Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Garabey?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Motion passes. Approved resolution twenty five, twenty six, number twenty five, a resolution of the governing board of the Saugus Union School District for Participating in Red River Week, Ms. Berry's?
Yes, uh, this week, this week, this month, it's gonna be October twenty third through the thirty first. And the theme is Life is a Puzzle, Solve It Drug Free. It's, uh, the week is usually filled with a lot of fun activities for the students at the school, dress up days, which are always my favorite. And this educational week is one of our signature practices that we include in America's Healthiest Schools application for teaching our students about drug awareness and healthy choices.
Thank you, Ms. Berry's, anybody have questions or comments? No, clerk, would you take the roll, please?
I move that we approve.
Oh, I thought we already made a move.
Second.
Okay, never mind. Okay, can we take the roll?
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Trunkie?
Aye.
Ms. Cooper?
Aye.
Ms. Garabey?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Motion passes, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty five, twenty six, number twenty five? Oh, never mind. Can we initiate a public hearing on the twenty five, twenty six initial, initial bargaining proposal from the Saugus Union School District to the CSEA chapter number one twelve?
So this is the beginning of our negotiation season. Our, the district's proposal, initial proposal to CSEA is attached to this. And then we'll hold the, the public hearing at the next board meeting, so that we can then start negotiations.
Thank you, any questions? Okay, review the twenty five, twenty six initial bargaining proposal from CSEA chapter one twelve to the Union, or Saugus Union School District.
Right, so this is just for your perusal, it is the initial proposal from CSEA to us.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to Business Services, can I get a motion in a second to approve AVA Builders, Inc., the track and field project at Plum Canyon Elementary School?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heinlein?
Let's change order, just add the addition of the, or standard, district standard fence during the project.
Okay. And we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, approve to declare certain district-owned property as surplus, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Heinlein?
Uh, just miscellaneous items.
Any questions?
Are these the trucks that we replaced and spent, like, two hundred and fifty grand on, or are these different?
E, um, I don't know if. Some may be, and the top one I don't think is.
Are we replacing the top one?
Possibly.
Move a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Uh, moving on to general functions, consider voting for one candidate for each of the two vacancies for membership.
This is just something, yeah, can you? Sorry. Two vacancies.
They're both.
Yeah, and they're, they're outside of our supervisory district.
Okay.
So I am not aware of any of the people that are running.
So do we want to vote for?
Care to vote?
Yeah, do we care to vote?
I'm gonna vote no anyway, so.
Okay.
All the candidates, okay.
It dies in the dais, yeah.
Okay, then it's gone, all right. Our next regular board meeting is October twenty first, we obviously have a meeting tomorrow to talk about data.
So we had some, the reason we set up November sixth was to do the mid-year review, and that's being taken over by Santa Clarita Elementary. So do we need to schedule a time to do?
We will need to, yes.
Okay.
If, if you can do end of October, can that replace the meeting on the sixth, and then the sixth can be mid-year?
And then we only have two Santa Clarita meetings? Or can we just add a Saturday morning or something?
I guess it depend, for me, I guess it depends on the agenda and the objective of the meetings. If you can't get it in two meetings, like, is three meetings enough, or does it need to be five, like?
I think that's gonna depend on us, yeah. So it's, my understanding of what we did tonight is we scheduled three meetings with the understanding that we may need to schedule subsequent meetings.
Or we may.
Or, yeah, or we may finish by the sixth and not need the eleventh. But I think it is prudent to put another date on the, on the calendar for the, the, the mid-year.
Well, cabinet doesn't need to be there for that, so we could do that on Veterans Day.
No, I don't want to.
Okay, anybody want to propose a date?
We're looking at Saturdays?
This is a complete aside, I'm sorry, but I was sitting there on the Patriot Day thing, and I was thinking that.
I guess the mid-year evaluation, isn't Dr. Hawkins usually there?
Yeah.
I think we need to find out dates that she's available, because I'm not sure.
That's right.
Right when she's, when she's gonna be back physically.
That's true. So we will, we'll circle back on that, but thank you for the reminder.
On the agenda for our October meeting.
Yes, that's right, do that.
And are we adding the meeting, the end of October, the board study sessions to the agendas?
Would we normally do that?
Well, they're not listed on the agenda.
So now we, yeah, now that we have our dates formalized.
All the dates get added.
Yep, there you go. Okay. Any questions, comments?
Oh, yeah, this is completely unrelated to anything we're doing, but as I was sitting on the Patriot Day thing, we don't do that for Veterans Day, we should encourage schools to do something like that for, for Veterans Day also. This is a personal thought, okay? Move to adjourn.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 Meeting is over at three, eight thirty P M.